Called order our January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Mason County Commission. Uh, we'll begin with our pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Nella, if you please lead us. Flag the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Commissioner, uh, we'll move on to item number three, roll call, clerk, please take roll. Uh, Mackenzie, I think, uh, having some sound issues.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutie.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Okay, very good. Uh, moving on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Uh, item four point one, if a clerk would please report the correspondence.
Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following. A marijuana application for P T Enterprise LLC. A marijuana license due to expire and a liquor license for Lori's Hudsport Gift and Liquor. Sandy Tarzwell, Wes Martin, Steve Pierce, John Campbell and Leanna Kotsar sent an applications for the Mason Transit Authority. Timberland Regional Library sent in twenty twenty-two budget documents. Brenda Hershey sent in a letter of resignation from the Board of Equalization. And Marla Morgan sent in a letter requesting to change the speed limit on East Greatview Loop.
Item number four point two, we have a press release. Uh, Mason County Board of Equalization Membership, uh, I believe Mark is covering that for us this morning.
I apologize, Commissioner, excuse me. So then, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, very good.
So this is a Mason County Board of Equalization Membership. Uh, the Board of Mason County Commissioners is seeking applicants to fill a regular member position and an alternate position on the Mason County Board of Equalization. The three-year term ends on May thirty-first. Applicants must reside in Mason County. The Board of Equalization is a three-member board appointed by the Mason County Commissioners. Two alternate members may also be selected. The Board's responsibility is to ensure that all property valuations are at a hundred percent of market value. So equitable tax assessment can be established. Taxpayers may appeal their assessments, including assessments of real and personal property, forest land, timber and open space. The Board also considers denial of senior citizen property tax exemptions. Uh, taxpayers can file a petition with the Board of Equalization and a hearing will be scheduled to present their appeal of their assessment for timely filed and completed petitions. Depending on the number of appeals heard each year, the Board may meet up to three days a week throughout the year. Board members are paid a per diem currently one hundred dollars per day when in session. As required by R C W eighty-four dot forty-eight dot oh four two. The successful applicant must attend training provided by the Washington State Department of Revenue within one year following appointment or reappointing. Interested citizens may obtain an application at the Mason County Commissioners Office at four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton, or by calling Shelton three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero. Extension three eight zero. Um, bail fair spell number is three six zero two seven five four four six seven extension three eight zero. Or visit the Mason County website at W W W dot Mason County WA dot gov. The positions are open until filled with the first review scheduled for February first, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, moving on to item number five, this is our open forum for citizen input. It's an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items not on today's agenda. I'll begin by asking, uh, folks that would like to make comment to raise their hand. Uh, we'll start with those. I see Greg, uh, Subnicki has his hand raised. Greg, go ahead.
Yes, um, last night I watched the briefing videotape on March twenty-third, twenty twenty. That was almost two years ago. At that briefing, all three commissioners, Loretta and Richard, were discussing the urgency of accepting the eight million dollar loan to extend the bail fair sewer. After much discussion, the only reason acceptance of the loan was unanimous was because both um, you, Mister Chairman, and Commissioner Trask agreed that repayment of the loan would be a burden on the county, not on the utility itself. Commissioner Netherlands said that even though he felt there were better ways to extend the sewer with less risk, he would be agreeable to accept the loan if it didn't put a bigger burden on his community. Commissioner Netherlands made very clear what his concerns were. And both Commissioner Schutie and Trask were very reassuring to him that repayment of this loan would be an obligation of the county. Commissioner Schutie even suggested eliminating a rate increase. Then I read a loan contract that Commissioner Trask signed the following day. And under special terms and conditions governing this loan agreement, the contract, it reads, the contractor shall adopt a rate increase of eighty-seven dollars to the base monthly rate per E R U or demonstrate there has been an increase in E R Us prior to project completion. And so I kind of want, I'm wondering what the discrepancy is here. I felt that there was a real um, connection, you know, even though Commissioner Netherlands was, you know, was not for this. Um, it really seemed like there was a meeting of the minds and it was pretty much that his community would be spared the burden of, you know, of having their rates increase if things didn't go as planned. And if some discussion could take place during this meeting, um, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Greg. Uh, any other comment? Again, uh, we'll start with folks that are able to raise their hand on the Zoom meeting. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised at this time. If you're unable to raise your hand but would like to make comment, you can unmute yourself. Say your name and the chair will recognize you. Uh, I see Brenda Hershey has her hand up. Brenda?
Uh, yes, um, Commissioner Schutie, it, it, um, I'm, I'm perplexed about these rates uh, for the E R Us and um, I've seen now this number eighty-seven dollars showing up a couple of times. And apparently it's not been, um, it's not been applied. Um, so I had been, I had been told by you that you were committed to keeping the rates at the current level. So, uh, you know, this is something that part of the meeting on January thirty-first, we are probably gonna need to go into in further depth. Um, one question that comes to my mind is, um, how many E R Us is it gonna take to um, to bring this uh, fund, this special fund to make it solvent? And to comply, to begin to comply with um, the state auditor's um, findings for the last five years. That and another thing that perplexes me is why we're going into undeveloped land, which is not part of the urban growth area. While there are so many homes in that area that, that have not had an extension given that are um, that are left using septic systems. And then, and, and then the other thing that, that I hope um, the county will address is what we're doing to in inspect and enforce the quality of the septic systems that are out there. So I think, uh, I think Commissioner Schutie that we all agree that uh, we wanna keep the water clean and safe because that's, that's just part of uh, the, the economy and quality of life here in, in Mason County. We want that. But at the same time, we want to have a long-term solution to the financial condition of the bail fair sewer system. Uh, and as I have told you and the other two commissioners, I empathize with you that you have um, uh, quite a challenge here. Recognize that. And I hope that the three of you will work together to come up with a long-term solution for all of Mason County. Thank you for allowing me to make comments.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment at this time? Again, you can either raise your hand on the Zoom meeting or unmute yourself and say your name. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to item number six, adoption of today's agenda. Commissioner, you're muted.
Mr. Chairman, move for adoption of today's agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt today's agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Item number seven, approval of minutes.
Mister Chair, I, I move that we approve the minutes of January tenth, twenty twenty-two briefing minutes, January tenth, twenty twenty-two special meaning, or special minutes and December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one regular minutes.
I second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, uh, January tenth, twenty twenty-two's briefing minutes, January tenth, twenty twenty-two's special minutes, and December twenty-first, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Uh, moving on to item number eight, this is a approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the items on today's action agenda. At which time, a commissioner or a member of the public may ask questions or have an item removed, uh, for a separate discussion and vote. Uh, Commissioner Nelland, if you please take items eight point one through three. Commissioner Trask, eight point four through seven, and I will take eight point eight through eleven.
I would be happy to, uh, Mister Chairman. Mister Chairman, item number eight point one reads, approval of warrants and treasures electronic remittance claims clearing fund. Warrants number eight zero eight five three zero zero through eight zero eight five six two one, the amount one million five hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred nineteen dollars forty-eight cents. Direct deposit fund warrants number eight three seven one five through eight four one oh four. The amount eight hundred one thousand seven hundred and seven uh, dollars twenty-one cents. Salary clearing fund warrants number seven zero zero six three eight one through seven zero zero six four one five. The amount one million sixty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars ninety-eight cents. The treasures electronic remittance, one million three hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred forty-six dollars sixty-three cents. Item number eight point two reads approval for the emergency management coordinator, uh, lead to sign the state homeland security program S H S P fiscal year twenty-one, uh, grant contract number E two one dash zero six four amendment for twenty thousand four hundred forty-one dollars from the Washington State Military Department and U S Department of Homeland Security. Item number eight point three, approval of the resolution deleting budget, budgetary accounting fund number four oh four North Bay Case Inlet Sewer Utility Reserve Fund and Fund Number Four or Five Wastewater System Development Fund.
Item eight point four, approval to adopt the Mason County Public Records Part Policy as presented. Item eight point five, approval of the fiscal year twenty-one Emergency Management Performance Grant American Rescue Plan Act Contract Number E twenty-two dash two zero five in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and five dollars with a fifty percent match from the two, twenty twenty-two Department of Emergency Management Salaries and Supplies Budget Lines. Item eight point six, approval to post and hire the Emergency Management Parks Manager position which replaces the vacated Emergency Management I T Parks Manager position. Item eight point seven, approval of the contract amendment for the bail fair uh, urban growth area planned action impact statement and the increased budget in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Item eight point eight, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine fifteen A M. To consider the adoption of a planned action ordinance, zoning amendments, some area plan amendments and development regulation amendments related to the bail fair U G A planned action E I S. Item eight point nine, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at nine fifteen A M. To consider approving the amendment to allow Mason County Public Utility District Number One to construct, operate and maintain their fiber optic communication in the county right of way. Item eight point ten, approval of the resolution for road vacation number four one zero petition by Mary Layton. Vacationing West Walnut Street and Fourth Street, subject to the following provisions that have all been satisfied. Number one, payment of nine thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-six cents, which is fifty percent of the appraised value for Class A easements. Number two, the petitioner will be required to relocate the existing board fence, fence to uh, map the right-of-way line along Third Street. Uh, number three, an easement for ingress and egress or any other purpose, if any, will be retained in accordance with R C W thirty-six point eight seven point one zero. An easement will be retained in favor of Mason County for any utilities present in the right of way. And item eight point eleven, approval for the chair to sign the federal emergency management applicant agreement designation letter. And the board to sign the FEMA signature authorization forms for three FEMA disaster declarations. Four two five three dash D R dot dash W A. And four four one eight dash uh, D R dash W A twenty eighteen severe weather storms. And four four eight one dash D R dash W A twenty twenty COVID nineteen pandemic. Commissioners, having read through all the items on today's action agenda, are there any items you would like to have removed for a separate discussion and vote?
No, Commissioner, but I do have a question on item number eight point one one, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, so after we did our declaration of emergency, I'd been receiving phone calls from people that had damages and stuff. Uh, when we pass this, if we pass this, uh, is this what's the last piece that's needed so they can go ahead and apply uh, for help on the, the disasters and the, the things that happen on their properties?
Uh, I will defer, uh, Mark, do you have a response?
I do. Uh, Commissioner Nelland, uh, I encourage those individuals to register their damages with us. They can go on to um, our emergency management website and pull down the form. Once they submit that, all that information will be gathered together along with other governments, uh, in our, in our county. Uh, and then that'll be pushed up to the state E O C, uh, to determine total cost for this disaster and whether um, the governor is going to request FEMA to, to, um, to, to help out with that.
Thank you very much. I'll do just that. That's all I had, Commissioner.
Great, thank you. Uh, any members of the public have questions on any of the items or would like to have an item removed for a separate discussion and vote? You can either raise your hand or unmute yourself and, and state your name. Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mister Chairman, move for approval of the action agenda as presented in its entirety.
And I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the action agenda in its entirety. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, and the motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, other business. Uh, are there any department heads or elected officials that would like to address the commission at this time? Okay, uh, Dave Windham, I see your hand is up.
Okay, hey, good morning, Commissioners. So, um, just an update on testing kit availability. We've received nine thousand test kits. We're gonna start pushing those out to the community at large. Um, in, you know, all three commissioner districts, and then I've ordered another twenty thousand test kits uh, to come in hopefully this week and another twenty thousand come in the following week. So we'll be pushing those out. Uh, through the community as well as um, providing access to those uh, kits through Amazon when those become available hopefully later this week. So just kind of giving the public a chance to know that this is coming. Watch for it, coming to a, uh, resource near you.
Mister, Mister Chairman, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Yeah, Dave, uh, on these test kits, uh, are they individual kits, sets of three or sets of five? When you're saying nine thousand, is it nine thousand sets of five, three or one?
Okay, so it's nine thousand total and they're coming in kits of five. Until we get this stuff from D O H, the twenty thousand, and we don't know if that's gonna be twos, threes or fives. So once we get those here, we'll have to sort that out and, and then, and make a distribution plan from there.
Thank you.
Great, any other questions for Dave?
One, real quick one. Um, Dave, are they the, the rapid tests?
So the first nine thousand are the easy rapids, and we don't know what we're getting from D O H. They're coming from a number of manufacturers. So a couple of things we're looking at is some of these kits don't come with instructions in Spanish. So we're going to try to put together some, some sheets that would go along with those test kits to go out to the community so that everybody has the ability to understand what's going on.
Great, thank you.
One more thing, that's, sorry, Commissioner, uh, if need, if you need, I'd be willing to take them to the Hispanic churches as I had in the past, uh, the ones that actually do say the Spanish and we can get it interpreted, uh, into the Guatemalan community. Just wanted to put that out there if you need me.
Yeah, we'll do.
Okay, anything else, uh, Dave?
That's it.
Very good, thanks for the updates. The other department heads or elected officials? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number ten, our public hearings. Uh, item ten point one, we have a public hearing to consider amendments to Title seventeen zoning codes regarding height limits, reduction of standard side yard setbacks and accessory dwelling unit requirements within specific zones in the rural lands and urban growth areas of Mason County. Uh, at this point, I'll turn it over to Marissa Watson to present.
Hi Commissioners, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, I just wanted to start by saying that um, this um, public, uh, these proposed, uh, Title seventeen zoning code changes. Um, the public notice requirements, um, were implemented according to Title fifteen point zero seven zero three zero. Um, the Planning Advisory Commission had a public hearing on November fifteenth. Uh, that was advertised in the journal on November fourth and eleventh of last year and on the county website. Um, and this particular public hearing was in the journal on December sixteenth and the twenty-third as well as the county website under the Commissioners' agendas. Um, so there are three different components to um, this Title seventeen zoning code amendments. The first one is um, eliminating the uh, height, uh, maximum of fifty-five feet. Um, and this is only in the urban growth areas. Um, so that, there are some zones within the urban growth area that the max is thirty-five feet. I believe there's one that's forty-five and there's one that's out. Um, there's one, um, I believe that's fifty-five as well. Um, but this proposed code change is to eliminate um, that max of fifty-five feet um, outright. Um, but um, there are, but this doesn't say that it would be allowed outright. Um, applicants still have to go through a special use process. So the public has another opportunity to make comment on um, issues such as density aesthetics, um, and so forth. Um, this change came about because our department has been receiving a lot of um, input from people who are interested in housing and commercial projects in the urban growth areas and setting the limit at fifty-five feet outright, um, was making it very difficult to make projects um, feasible. Um, but so we're proposing eliminating the fifty-five feet. It still has to go through a special use permit process which will go to a hearing examiner. There'll be, the public has another opportunity to speak um, at that hearing as well. Um, and this is only for um, particular zones within the urban growth areas of bail fair Allen and Shel, in Shelton and one rural, um, rural lands zone, which is the master plan resort. Um, so those particular zones that this would apply to, um, should be in the packet um, that was on the website and that you all received. Um, and it's also stated in the staff report as well. Um, the second change that we're looking at is that um, the residential areas of the urban growth areas do not have an administrative uh, variance process for the reduction of side yard setbacks, whereas the rural lands do have that process right now. Um, so we're proposing an adminis, a building administrative variance process um, that allows for reductions on the side yard only within the residential districts of the U G As. Um, those, it would be an application process like similar to what is done right now on the rural lands. Um, but in this process, it will also be reviewed by the building department because we're looking at the side yard setbacks. Um, do you have to meet building and fire code? Um, so the building department and the planning department will be reviewing the application as well. And, and then the third um, change um, has to do with the accessory dwelling unit criteria. Um, these are, these changes were really based off of um, looking at a couple, a couple pieces that really don't make sense right now. Um, one section is that right now the code says that the A D U shall be located within a hundred and fifty feet um, of the principal residence or shall be a conversion of an existing detached structure. Um, so when, i- in that case, if we're allowing A D Us to be a conversion of an, an existing garage, there were garages that were beyond a hundred and fifty feet, um, that we were having to allow that conversion. So having um, so having that piece of within one hundred and fifty feet in the same line doesn't really make sense when we're allowing a conversion of an existing structure. Um, so we are proposing to eliminate the um, uh, the piece about being within a hundred and fifty feet. Um, and then the other elimination was um, uh, the owner of the A D U must reside on the lot in either the principal residence or the A D U. Um, so that would, we're proposing eliminating that from areas that are outside of shoreline jurisdiction. Um, but it would, so it would still apply um, for shoreline lots. Um, so those are the three different areas that we're proposing changes um, on. Um, we did get um, from the C P A process, we did get comments from the P U D. Um, and those were most, they were, they were positive comments. They were included in the packet as well. And they were basically um, informing any applicants to, to contact them, um, to make sure that um, services were gonna be able to be in place. Um, and then I believe you all received an email this morning, I did as well. Um, concerns from a Diane Hartley, I believe. Um, and it looked like um, those concerns mostly had to do with um, increased, she, she's believing that there's gonna be um, issues with increased density. Um, my answer to that would be that um, the A D U changes that we're making, I'm, they shouldn't be increasing the, the, the in, uh, density at all. There's just some portions of the code that we don't think match up. Um, I don't believe that any of these changes are going to increase density. Like I say, the height limit um, is still gonna have to go through a special use uh, process. Um, they're still gonna have to have all the requirements um, for water and sewer um, traffic in place. Um, as well is the side back, the, the side setbacks, I don't have to do with the identity um, issue as well, in my opinion. Um, so with that being said, um, the Planning Advisory Commission at their meeting in November um, sent this on to the D O C C um, with a recommendation of approval. And um, we're asking staff and packets requesting that the D O C C approve and adopt the proposed amendments to the Development Regulations Regarding Height Limits, Standard Side Yard Setback Reductions and Accessory Dwelling Units. And recommend that they approve the amendments as outlined in the attachments A, B and C with your package. And then I'll turn it over to the board.
Great, thanks, Marissa. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, uh, any members of the public have questions for staff on the proposals in front of us? And you can raise your hand on the Zoom meeting or unmute yourself and state your name. Okay, hearing and seeing no questions from the public, we'll move into public comment. Let's begin. Mackenzie, I believe you have written correspondence from Ms. Hartley to read into the record. We'll begin with that.
I do. Diane wrote, this is to register my opposition to the proposed zoning code changes to Allen, Belfair and Shelton to be discussed at the January eighteenth public hearing. There is already a large number of new housing units underway in Allen and Belfair. The proposed zoning code changes dramatically increase the amount of housing possible to build without addressing infrastructure. Highway three through Belfair is already far too congested at commuter and school open close hours with the traffic backed up as far as the airport, at times taking over forty minutes to make it through Belfair. There is no other route from Kitsap County to Shelton equipped to handle this, the increasing volume of traffic. State Route one oh six is not designed as a main thoroughfare. The freight corridor is not scheduled to be built until approximately two thousand and twenty-five, if it stays on schedule and doesn't lose funding. Even with it, Allen will be backed up like Belfair is today as the volume of traffic will go through that town after it bypasses Belfair. If an E I S was done, it is hard to believe this issue did not raise red flags. I feel all building permit issuance for new housing should be suspended and the A D U rules left as is until roads are built to handle the volume of traffic that will occur. The problem is already worse in the summer months even before the housing currently underway is occupied. Further, there have already been issues with water availability. Tribes have expressed concern on this issue. I'm concerned concerned that manipulations are employed to have water rights issued when the water right regulations would not otherwise allow them. You owe it to the citizens of Mason County to be sure quality of life does not suffer due to overbuilding for the infrastructure and water resources. Please vote no on the proposed zoning code changes.
Thank you, Mackenzie. With that, was there any other written correspondence on this item?
There was not.
Okay, then we'll move into public comment. Again, if there are members of the public that would like to make comment on this proposal, you can do so by raising your hand or muting yourself and stating your name and the chair will recognize you. Are there any members of the public that would like to make comment on item ten point Final time, any comment from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and move into Commissioner deliberation or motion.
Commissioner, I had the opportunity to speak with Ms. Hartley. Her concerns are valid, the things that she worries about, but you know, and doing more work on it, looking at it, though, I want to make some comments on the discussion that I had with her. Yes, this does actually can increase density because when you go up, you bring in more more homes and or, you know, more apartments or whatever that is. But in this particular situation, it's not done willy nilly. It still has to go through the special use process, which is not that easy, which means that they will look at some of the main concerns. I agree with her concerns. We have situations where we're going to have growth and the traffic impacts are going to affect all these people, but it doesn't just go by a notice. It goes through a process first that will, I hope, always guarantee that the right decisions are made through that special use permit process. And there is always still, as we've talked about before, the need for that housing. And in order to build that housing so that we can have our own people that are already here still have a place that they can live, not just to bring people in from the outside, in order to do that, it has to pencil. And if it can't pencil, it can't be built. We've increased some of the the height densities in the past in order to do that, and apparently there are still some issues that come with it. I want to also point out that through that special use permit process, they also do look at the views and the impacts that it has on the surrounding visual aspects as well. So as long as it goes through that special use permit, the, I just want to make note that it is literally a process that is not being just thrown out, and we're just saying, okay, now you can build however tall you want. So with that being said, I wanted to add my support for that. And I also wanted to point out that the A D U and the change, this could allow for a little more density, disagree a little bit, Marissa. The reason why is if it has to be within that certain footprint, sometimes they don't have the reserve area for their septics and stuff to be able to to be able to build that A D U unit. But now if you can go outside of that, you still have your reserve area for that home. And I want to point out that it is actually very important, as we've talked about before, having these these smaller homes that are by the residents can help again their families stay in or perhaps they can rent it to somebody in the community at a rate that's more reasonable because the availability is there for them. So I see it as, yes, it can, but at the same time, it's a needed thing, that's something that needs to be done in order to allow families and people to put an A D U on their property better, help in our community and keeping those reserves for the septics and stuff on the sides, even though this is mainly for the areas in the U G As. Actually, no, this one's not, it's for for everywhere, even in the U G As, that's still very important to be able to utilize that property for their families. So I'll be in favor of it. Would you like a motion, Commissioner?
I would entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval and the adoption of the amendments to the Mason County Code Title seventeen relating to height limits as described in attachment A, accessory dwelling unit requirements as described in attachment B, and an administrative reduction process for the side yard setbacks in the urban growth areas as described in attachment C without any changes.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve and adopt amendments to the Mason County Code Title seventeen relating to height limits as described in attachment A, accessory dwelling unit requirements as described in attachment B, and an administrative reduction process for side yard setbacks in the urban growth areas as described in attachment C. Is there any other discussion?
One more, Commissioner, I just want to make a comment again. Thank Ms. Hartley, Ms. Hartley for reaching out to us and for the communication I have with her, and she, I want to point out again, she did have valid points, but I think we've also protected some of the concerns that she had by still guaranteeing that goes through that process. So thank you for reaching out to the commission with with your opinions, and we do take them seriously, and we will also hopefully look at the creation of issues that that come about because of traffic and stuff as you've asked.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Netherland's comments as well. I think it's so important that we, we've got all, we've got ways to protect and to secure decisions going forward. So Commissioner, thank you for the comments.
Yeah, I'll just add, Commissioners, appreciate those comments as well. You know, the the fact of the matter, and this is something that I've said, you know, since I came on the commission in two thousand and seventeen, if we're not going to grow in the urban growth areas, you know, where are we going to grow? And being able to build to higher heights in the urban growth area where we can focus density, where there are urban services, municipal water, sanitary sewer, those are good things from, I think, you know, a water resource perspective. Those are good things from managing growth and preventing rural or rural sprawl or sprawl into the rural areas as well. And so, you know, when we did this initial height increase a few years ago, we thought we got it right, and it turns out it needed to be tweaked a little bit once it got into practice. And I think the fact that there are still sideboards on the processes involved with each of these items actually should be really reassuring to the to the public that, you know, to borrow Commissioner Netherland's terminology, it won't be done willy nilly. There will be review, there will be oversight of of these proposals if and when they come through our permitting process. And so we want to be able to have a code that's, you know, that that's practical, that's flexible, and that helps us meet our requirements under the Growth Management Act and allows us to to focus growth, you know, where it belongs and and not have sprawl out in the rural areas. So overall, this is, these are good fixes. Appreciate Marissa's work on it as as well as the planning commission's work on it, and we'll be supporting this as well. Any other comments, Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. We'll go ahead and close the hearing and move on to item number eleven, which is our board reports and calendar. Commissioner Trask, if you wouldn't mind getting us started, and then Commissioner Netherland, and I'll finish up.
Great, great. So just to begin with, I'd like to wish Ginger a happy birthday today. This afternoon, we have our Mason Transit Board meeting. Tomorrow, I have an LTAC meeting, a women's group meeting, Thursday is the E O C meeting. I have lunch with a couple constituents regarding according time count, D N R beneficiary meeting, WASC L S C meeting, Public Works Board Executive Meeting, and we're back here on Monday for briefings, WASC Virtual Assembly. Monday is also the Mason County G O P meeting in the evening, Board Health meeting on Tuesday, Community Action Council meeting on Wednesday, my brother's birthday is on the twenty-seventh, happy birthday Wayne, E O C meeting, Area Agency on aging meeting. We've got a lot of meetings, don't we, guys? And then on Friday, the twenty-eighth, we have our county and city and ports leadership breakfast, WASC L S C meeting and other Public Works Board Executive Meeting. Cheryl Fables from Pack Mountain is retiring. I'm excited for her, but sad to see her go. She is, she has such a passion for WorkSource and for helping Lewis, Mason and Thurston Counties. Then back here on Monday for E O C meetings, county briefings, WASC virtual, and then we also have our special commission meeting later that evening.
So this last few weeks has been crazy for all of us, I'm sure, especially, you know, with the the storms and the weather and everything that we've dealt with. So with that, there's a lot of stuff that I'm not going to be able to say that I went because I went to because I was literally all over the place everywhere with many different organizations, community groups and stuff. I met with a bunch of people out in Tuhuya, for example, and I don't think it was an official group name that goes with it. If it is, it would be a church that I met it, met him in. But we had our emergency meeting, we had our area command meetings, let me left board, the audit committee meeting, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority Finance meeting, our briefings, regular special meeting that was called the regular Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority meeting, meeting with Tuhuya coming up in the the next week. We have a Mason Transit Authority meeting after this, I have Mason County Housing Authority Area Command briefing, sort of basically the voice, Board of Health meetings, we're looks like we may have a joint meeting in the coming weeks here with the city, the port and the county. And we have our special meeting on the thirty-first. I I may just for the record, so they may, so that it may be clear that I have a friend who's been asked to attend the G O P meeting, and he had called and asked if I would have attend with him. And, you know, I haven't been to a G O P meeting in years and years, but that may be a possibility that I will go with him, and if I do, then me and Commissioner Trask may be in the same place at the same time, but we will not talk county business. So I just wanted to make that clear. I'm not sure I'm even going, but he has asked me if he decides to go, I will, I will be attended with him. So with that, that brings us back, and we started everything all over again.
Going forward this week, I have a meeting with a constituent this afternoon, and then our Mason Transit Board meeting, who can now coordinating council meeting. And then a couple of other constituent meetings later this week, next week, briefings, Board of Health, Army Corps of Engineers, Kukomish Valley check-in, Housing and Behavior Health Advisory Board, our joint meeting with the city and port, and then briefings with our special meeting on the evening of the thirty-first, as well as my bi-weekly meeting with the V H A S O staff leadership ahead of our February first commission meeting. Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before the board or if no other additions to your calendar or report, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Move to second that we adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Special hello to Tari out there from the Ark. I see she's on their side. Go ahead.
Take care, everybody.
Bye.